The board will now come to order. Madam Clark, please call the rest.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Orion, Alderman Cone, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Martin, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Clark Hubbard. Eighteen present, you have quorum.
Quorum being present. We're so honored to have with us today Moms Demand Action for common sense gun laws in America and to be led in prayer today by Gail Wexler, the faith leader of Moms Demand Action. Ms. Wexler?
Okay, I'll do this. Good morning. Giver of life and love, you created all people as one family and called us to live together in harmony and peace. Surround us with your love as we face the challenges and tragedies of gun violence. For our dear ones, for our neighbors, for strangers, make us instruments of your peace. God of compassion, we give thanks for first responders, for law enforcement and firefighters and EMTs and all those whose duties bring them to the streets, the malls, the schools, the houses of worship, the workplaces and the homes where the carnage of gun violence takes place every day. For our brothers and sisters who risked their lives and their serenity as they rush to our aid, loving God, make us instruments of your peace. Merciful God, bind up the wounds of all who suffer from gun violence, those injured, those who are survivors, those left alone and grieving and those who struggle to get through one more day. Bless them with your presence and help them find hope. For all whose lives are forever marked by the scourge of gun violence, loving God, make us instruments of your peace and let us say amen.
Join me in a round of applause for Ms. Wexler and Moms Demand Action for bringing us, opening us up in prayer today. We're spinning with line item three, introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the nineteenth. Alderman from the nineteenth. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We'll make this easy. So since everybody's sitting up in the public gallery, let's just make everybody my honored guest up there today.
Alderman from the twenty-first.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to welcome Mr. Percy Green III, the Vice President for the Firefighters Institute for Race Equality and Mr. Michael Warwick, the Chief of Staff, the Circle Attorney, Kim Gardner.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further inductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wraps up.
Thank you, members of the board. Mr. President, today is June 7th. It's National Donut Day. We're proud to have the spokesman, the Alderman from the twenty-third here representing the donut people. Thank you. But more importantly, it was on this day in 2019 that we woke up only one win away from winning a Stanley Cup.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the minutes dated May 31st, 2019.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-second. Entertain a second on that motion. Entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-first. I know it was a late hockey game, but come on. You're all gonna have to wait. Any discussion? Alderman, favor sign if I was saying aye. I think we're prepared for the courtesy resolution. Alderman from the, we're gonna spend our regular order of business to take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderman from the nineteenth, would like to make a motion on our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to move to adopt our courtesy resolution calendar.
But move by Alderman from nineteenth. Seconded by Alderman from twenty-second. Alderman from nineteenth, please approach the dials.
Our fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. It is probably more important today than it was even the first day that the concept came about. As you know, our country, our world, and most especially our region has gone through an awful lot with gun violence that is beyond anyone's dreams. Awareness is just not enough. We need to find solutions. We need to be about that every day. We need to change the culture and the way people think and treat each other. It can't be the only solution to every problem. And we must identify that for those who can't do it for themselves. So I am honored to be here, to stand here before you because we have had the pleasure the last year or so with this chambers really focusing on how we can identify funds, different programs that are available out here to cure gun violence. But as often, adults cannot agree. But we're gonna get over that. It's time. So I first let me appreciate and thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of ending gun violence. It is more than what we can ever ask any individual resident or group of people to do. Our society should not be in this position. So what I'd like to do is to first thank the President of the Board of Alderman Louis Reed. As much as we have talked about and suggested different things, a lot of people have thought that it's just a police issue. We know it's not. We have to do something different. And so this resolution has been deliberated and considered to acknowledge victims and survivors of gun violence in the city of St. Louis and renew their commitment to reducing gun violence in our city. And so I will not read the entire resolution, but we know in January of 2013, Hady Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed. Just weeks later, it was celebrated on her 22nd birthday, this idea to form an awareness group that focused on gun violence. But what I wanted to give you is just a few other things that hopefully this will give you some peace to know that we are trying to be on the right track. So earlier this week, this board, with the Ways and Means Committee, committed to $500,000 to fund. And we said cure violence, but we know cure violence could be not just one program, but maybe a combination of four or five other programs because we know that we have ceasefire and a number of others. And we have to make sure that the appropriate analysis is done so that we know we're going in the right direction and spending the money appropriately to actually achieve our goals. We also talked about that we cannot allow a small entity or unprofessional entity to actually execute this. We also understood that it must be under the leadership of our Public Safety Department because it goes hand in hand. Our police need help. Our police need additional training. Our police can't do it by themselves. The homicide rate is continuing to be at a level that is totally unacceptable. As of June 4th, we've had 77 murders. That's unconscionable for this. It's just unconscionable for a small city like St. Louis. So as we wear orange today and we continue to give our memorial to Ms. Pendleton and we continue to honor the other Americans who have lost their lives, that were caught short, who were injured by guns. You know, this national effort has designated June 7th, 2019, the first Friday in June, as the Fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We would like to acknowledge you and ask you to come to the podium so that our president can present you with this resolution and also say to you that we need your help. We need you to continue to do what you do, be front and center. And as we continue to deliberate how we move forward in a collective, responsible manner,
I am just so honored to have Moms Demand Action joining us today. They're out fighting each and every day against gun violence across our communities, not just in the city of St. Louis, but all across our region and across the state. And they've, you think we have it tough now. If they weren't out working, doing what they're doing, it would be even a lot worse than we're seeing today. As a father of four, I'm just so honored to share this podium, this platform, with you today. And I am just so thankful for the work that you do. You don't have to go far to see how violence has affected the city of St. Louis. You just turn on the news tonight. You turn on it Saturday, Sunday, any day of the week, Monday through Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and you see it. That's affecting families every day. It's affecting our school systems. It's affecting our economy. And it's leaving people who have lost loved ones in ruins and having to rebuild. So as a father of four and as a person who has lost loved ones due to gun violence, I'm just so thankful for the work that you do. This resolution is the highest honor the board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this point. So 100, 200 years from now, when they research and they read about the city of St. Louis and they found that the city has finally had, through history, risen up and got the gun issue under control, they will read about your role and the role you played in making that happen. So I am just so thankful for what you've done thus far and what you continue to do. Let's give them a big round of applause and a thank you for what they've done. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Mr. President, members of the board, I certainly want to thank Moms Demand Action for all the great work that they do across this country. As someone whose family have been victims to gun violence, my nephew was shot and killed in 2015. As someone who represents a ward and a neighborhood that is in the top four of the 50% increase in the month of May, it is very troubling, the amount of guns that are in our communities. And I just want to encourage you to continue to do the work. It's hard work. But I have this theory that if hundreds of black people would march around Cole County, Festus Fenton, toting AR-15s legally, it will scare the hell out of some people. Because, and we might have change. Because the people that are toting these guns around our neighborhoods, that are scaring people that I represent, it is sickening. I witnessed just the other day in my neighborhood, a guy just standing on a corner of Ferris and Brennan with an AR-15 strapped to him, nice summer clothes on, just walking around freely. And people over there are terrified. And there's absolutely nothing that the police can do about it. That is troubling and that is sad. And I would hope that we elevate the outcry to our state legislatures, that they would do something, they will make change. But they will never make change unless we get in their backyard. See, when it happens to their family member, when they're tragically gunned down at a movie theater, when they're tragically gunned down at a school, when they're tragically gunned down at a church, then maybe they would get the message. But we need to continue to work together and be strong and do whatever we can to support you in that effort and to support one another. There has to be a better way. We can make change and we can make change together. And I just salute what you do because I know it's hard work. There's a tremendous amount of volunteer hours. There's a tremendous amount of travel. There's a tremendous amount of conversations with people that seem to have deaf ears. The struggle is real, but please stay in it. And if there's anything I can do to encourage and support you, let me know. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to stand up and commend all of you today. It is so important, the work that you do, whether it's, you know, a mom that is shot down in a drive-by or children in a school shooting. These things are becoming more and more prevalent and we as elected leaders need to be held accountable for being responsive. It seems that as a society, we're becoming immune to some of this violence. And we are just so grateful for you all to keep this in the forefront, to keep standing up, to keep bringing this to our attention and make sure that we don't get away with not doing anything. Whether it's in Jefferson City, you know, we have conversations here about what we can be doing at the Board of Aldermen and we really need you to just keep holding our feet to the fire. Don't let us forget about these tragedies that are happening every day in our backyard. So thank you so much for the work that you do. I applaud you. And please, keep showing up and let us know how we can help. So thank you. And I'd like to add my name to this resolution and I would move to embank it.
It's been moved that we embank this resolution. It's been seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clark, please create another copy of this resolution and bank.
So noted.
Alderman from the twenty-first. Sorry. I'm used to Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank you for sponsoring this critical resolution. This here expresses our commitment to ending this terrible epidemic in our city. And I also want to thank you, Alderman Davis and Alderman Volmer for leading the charge to fully fund, cure violence this session in the Ways and Means Committee by $500,000, creating gun violence as a public health crisis. Coming from the 21st Ward, I am no stranger to gun violence. Many of the people who voted for me just two years ago no longer live because of gun violence. Crime has increased in my ward by 13% in the last two months. And I think that this is an issue that we cannot sit on any longer. And we have to put the resources that will fully stop this problem that's spreading throughout our communities. And that includes funding cure violence. That also includes fully funding the Circle Attorney's Office with more financing that they need for the technology to actually stop crime and put violent offenders in jail. And we need to call on our state legislator to take away this silly open carry law. I want to thank you, Mr. President, for all that you do. And thank you, Alderman Davis, for sponsoring that amendment. And thank you for all that you do as well in promoting and advocating for this crisis. Thank you.
Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I also want to commend the people standing up there with you on the podium. For years, for years before Governor Blunt became the governor, this Board of Aldermen opposed open carry in many various ways. And we talked about what would happen in the city of St. Louis and in Kansas City and other places if they went ahead and passed that. And we fought that. When I was first elected in 91, we had a Democratic legislative. In fact, everybody was Democrat mostly there.
Good old days.
And in the years, I mean, the governor was Democrat. The city, I mean, the statewide elected officials, the legislature, both House and the Senate. And so they listened. And we didn't say, if you think that's a good thing for the rural communities, then you keep your guns and things like that. Actually, my uncles are hunters and they believe in guns. I grew up in a small town, medium town. And so they believe in guns. And they're African-American and they believe in it, but they hunt responsibly. But everything that's good in one place is not good in another place. This is why we have zoning, why we have Class A, B, C, D, because there are different places where something might be good. You've got your residential areas. You've got your business area. You've got your factory areas. So we begged with them not to pass an open carry. But when Governor Blunt came about that and we started to get more of a Republican legislature. So I had to put this where it belongs. Then all of a sudden, this is what we got. I wish they would have some heart. We had Governor Parson here not too long ago. I wasn't clapping, clapping because I was waiting to see what he was gonna do. I wish that they would take another look at what is happening here and maybe hear some of our, because we do have state reps there that are telling them that again right now, that this is not good for our community. Take another look at what they've done and maybe decide that it doesn't have to be statewide, this open carry, that it's not good in urban communities. And it's not good to have people walking around with guns which open carry. Now, I will say, there are some people, my predecessor believed in that, okay? Because he said the police should not be armed versus people being armed. Nobody's saying we're taking away your right to have guns. We're saying that there is a responsible way to have that. Much as if you have a First Amendment right, you still don't have the right to go into a theater and scream out "fire." So we're not saying that you shouldn't have guns and that you shouldn't be ready. But I would always implore people to read the Second Amendment because the legal definition that they've gotten from what it says is just not the same thing. They've expanded it so much. It talks about being armed to have a militia. And this is not what we have, okay? That was to protect your state. And that's not what we're having going on. And so for people to just fight this, fight this, fight this, I think what we need to do is clarify the Second Amendment. We need to look at, if we can't do it in states like Missouri, we need to have a federal law looking at what exactly the Second Amendment says. Because I do not believe, and most of the people that I know that have read the Second Amendment do not agree with this expanded use of the Second Amendment so that we don't have any authority to say you can't carry, open carry and march around people's neighborhoods. That would make, so people talk about fear of their lives and the police. I would be fear of my life if you're marching in my neighborhood with a gun. That would make me scared. And that might make me, if I have a gun, be trigger happy to try to protect myself. And I just implore the governor and the Republican-controlled House and Senate to really look at how this is affecting our community. And if it's not affecting your community that way, that's great. I don't want it to affect your community that way. But if you want me to have sensitivity for your issues, your farming issues, if you want your pigs someplace and those kind of things, I wish you would have sensitivity to the issues of the city of St. Louis and other places where gun violence is a very real thing that happens day in, day out. You come back on a Monday, you hear 10 people shot, seven people killed. That takes a toll. And after a while, you almost get desensitized to it to a certain extent, if it's not you. Or you go, "It's not anybody that I know." And we really shouldn't have to be living like that, especially when it's not that the people who elected us imposed upon that. There was people who live someplace else who just don't seem to have a sensitivity about what it's like to live in an urban community. And I almost wish that we could make them come and live here with their families for a while and get exposed to it. They may be more sensitized about what is going on here. And again, I want to thank you for your work and I appreciate you and keep going because sometimes it's out of the mouth of babes and young people that a movement begins and people hear what's going on. So thank you so much.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Good morning, President Reed, members of the board. I just want to echo what my colleagues are saying and thank you all. Thank you for the work you're doing nationally and locally. Me, myself, I also represent a ward that's diverse but is dealing with some of these same issues that my colleague from the 21st spoke about. And so I just want to say thank you. It's gonna take all hands on deck. The one thing I regret is that I didn't get the note about wearing orange because clearly I like to dress up. So I would've worn orange today, but I am gonna have on orange tomorrow with my T-shirt from Better Family Life on the Silence the Violence March that they're doing tomorrow. Yesterday, I left, literally walked out of the Silence the Violence meeting and got a call that it was a gun, it was a shooting at the corner of Dalemore and Union in my ward. This is, I mean, you just, you don't get surprised. It never gets old. You never get used to it. But it's gonna take all hands on deck, like I said. So thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for everybody else. And I'll see you guys tomorrow in my orange. I catch up.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the third. We can't let you sit this one out.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Once again, I'd like to also echo what our colleagues are saying. It's extremely important right now for everything that's going on in this city. If we want to be leaders and the change that needs to take place within the United States, we have to start being proactive. And one of the things that we have to do is start working collectively together with individuals and organizations that are already working towards reducing gun violence and being present within our community. So we appreciate everything that you all are doing. So we appreciate everything that you all are doing. I appreciate you, Mr. President, Alderman Davis, Alderman Volmer. We have death around us every single day. And we walk around and have been, just from our perspective, like this is a normality. Our kids should not have to grow up not being afraid of bullets. We hear shots regularly, and we don't get to the ground. We just look around, waiting for one to come whiz and byz. That's an issue for us. It is not normal to grow up in an area where you see people toting guns and can shoot them freely, and we have to wait 20 or 30 minutes for a response from our officers who are supposed to protect and serve our areas. And it's not only on them. This is a community issue. This is an organizational issue. This is an issue that we all have to put our hands in changing and ensuring that we can wash ourselves from the dirty stain that we have as a name for our city, as being the number-one most violent city per capita in the entire United States. That's an issue. Going through the same rhetoric year after year, summer after summer, all of us knowing that the summers will get bad, the hotter it gets, the more people that will succumb to gun violence, that's a mental issue. And that's an illness for us to continue to say these things are going to happen and not do something about it, to be proactive and ensuring that we change that stigma. So I appreciate every individual that's working towards changing. Once again, that narrative that has been played out across the United States. When you type in "the city of St. Louis," the first thing you see shouldn't be a negative story. The first thing you read about should not be how dangerous it is to walk around in our city. It's hard to get people to come here, want to stay here, grow their children up here, and want to travel here when we cannot even keep ourselves as residents safe. We can't ensure that the children have an area that they can grow up in, feel safe in, and actually thrive in our city. We have to start doing what's necessary to ensure that we can protect the lives of the residents and any individual who deems it necessary and wants to come and be a part of our growing city, who are dwindling in numbers, our population is going down. And 10 or 15 years ago, we had a lot more children running around this city. And people are afraid. They don't want their children to grow up in an environment like this. So it's important that we all step up to the plate and do what we need to do as a city to control some of the issues that are plaguing our city. And this is one of the most prevalent. So once again, I appreciate you all. Thank you for what you are doing. Thank you for what we all are attempting to do. And hopefully, within the next 10 to 12 years, we see a significant drop in gun violence. Hopefully, this time next year, we see a significant drop in gun violence, something that we can actually measure and say, "This is why there is a drop." This is what we will continue to do. In five years from then, we shall see these type of numbers based on the facts and not just our speculation. That's where we need to be. That is where we need to be focused on. Cure violence is one thing, I think, can bring us some statistics, something that we can have tangible and talk about within this board and to the state legislator to say, "This is working or this is not working." How do we need to tweak it to make sure that it's unique for our city and the individuals who live within this city so we can have a different mindset? We have to change our environment. And that means that we have to get comfortable to be uncomfortable. So I appreciate you all in all of your uncomfortable stages and getting to the point where we are right now. But we have to continue to push forward, and thank you for your services.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? We now are going to hear from Christine Novales from Moms Demand Action.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. Thank you for all of your kind words and all of your important words about gun violence, not only in this country, but in this city. You know, as we heard about the 77 people that have already been murdered in our city this year, and not only their lives, but I just think of the trauma that we're bringing on our city of the families, the friends, the neighbors, the neighborhoods that are being impacted by gun violence. And we, you know, as an organization and in partnership with other organizations in the city and with the government are really just looking for some common sense solutions to end the problem of gun violence. And one of the mottos of Moms Demand Action just nationwide is "Keep Going." And that's our mantra, and that's what we will continue to do so that when we come back here next year, our numbers will be lower, that we won't have 77 deaths, and that when we come back in five years, we won't be having the same issues that we're having today. So I just appreciate the opportunity to be here, thanks to all of the volunteers who are here and the thousands of volunteers across our area and across our state who are working to end gun violence every day. Thank you very much. Absolutely. A couple of ways to get involved with Moms Demand Action. The easiest one is just to text READY to 64433. We also go on our Moms Demand Action Missouri Facebook page or momsdemandaction.org. We have a large group in St. Louis, and we would always welcome, you know, talking with individuals, with groups about, you know, how we can work together. Thank you.
I'd like members of the Board of Aldermen who would like to take a photo on the steps with Moms Demand Action and show your support for reducing gun violence in our city and also as a thank you for them, for all the work that they do. Let's give them a big round of applause. And please come up to the dais if you'd like to.
You guys should flank across the front, all of you all together.
It's okay.
You guys go down. You all should be on front. You guys should be at the front. And then those of us that remember, you're orange. I don't, I got the memo, but I'm the orange. You wore orange, Tom. Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Okay.
And let's give this to... It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolutions. Count all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board. The appointment of Ms. April Ford Griffin, who resides in the 5th Ward, replacing Alana Green, whose term will expire February 1, 2022. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderman of the 5th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move for appointment of April Ford Griffin to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board.
Move by Alderman from the 5th, second by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Senior Services Fund Board. The reappointment of Ms. Ann Banz, who resides in the 26th Ward and whose term will expire April 17, 2021. The reappointment of Ms. Teresa Mayberry, who resides in the 15th Ward and whose term will expire April 17, 2021. I respectfully request your approval of the reappointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderman from the 15th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Senior Services Fund Board.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to approve the mayor's reappointments to the Senior Services Fund Board.
Move by Alderman from the 15th, second by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Forest Park Advisory Board. The appointment of Mr. Jake Banton as an at-large member who resides in the 26th Ward, fulfilling the unexpired term of Arthur Perry, whose term will expire on June 26, 2020. The reappointment of Ms. Lita Price Land as an at-large member who resides in the 26th Ward, whose term will expire June 26, 2023. I respectfully request your appointment and approval of appointments and reappointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Forest Park Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. President, fellow members of the board. I move that we approve the mayor's appointments and reappointments to the Forest Park Advisory Board.
Move by Alderman from the 28th, second by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? Alderman from the first.
President and members of the board, Alderman from the 28th would yield.
Alderman from the 28th will yield a question to the Alderman from the first.
Yes, I will.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Alderman, so the members that are appointed to the Forest Park Advisory Boards are both residents of the 28th Ward, right?
No, these are residents of the 26th Ward, actually.
I'm sorry, 26th Ward.
Yes.
Yes. And how many members are there on the Forest Park Advisory Board?
Ooh, off the top of my head, at least a dozen. I'm not, I don't have the number off the top of my head.
And do you know of any that are north of Page at all?
That are north of Page? I do not have the addresses of all of the members in front of me right now.
I can tell you that I've been going through, because we actually, at the Rules Committee, we have the charge to look at if an Alderman is qualified to be at the board. But also, for years, I have been promoting that diversity does not mean the 26th, 28th, 18th South St. Louis. And that's north of King's High, I mean, north of Page, there are people that should be on the board. Lita is my friend, I don't know Jake, but I will be voting no, because I can tell you there are not. And that's with almost all of the committee. And north St. Louis does not mean the 18th Ward and the 26th Ward. There's enough, I was glad to see somebody from the 5th Ward. But again, I will continue to tell people, when you're sponsoring these things responsibly, I'm going to be asking you, "Who else is on there?" And I do already have the answer. And the mayor is not appointing anybody north of Page, and that is ridiculous, because Aldermen reside north of Page, and we have people. The community should be well-represented. So Lita is my friend, but I'm voting no on the basis that this is ridiculous, that we don't have an inclusive city. And I think that if you were being left out, 26th, 28th was never anything. After a while, and you saw that, you would have some problems with that, too. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any, there's been a request, Alderman from the 23rd.
I would ask that for further discussion, be referred to committee.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded that we refer this, the mayor's appointment to committee. Alderman, you good with that?
We just renewed, we did appointments last week for the same board that were not referred to committee, but if that is how we'd like to proceed, I will recommend that we move these to the Parks Committee.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we refer this mayor's appointment to committee. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please send the mayor's appointment to the Forest Park Advisory Board.
So noted.
Thank you, ma'am. We dispense with line items 7 through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 55, sponsored by Alderman Davis, a redevelopment plan for 1900 through 34, Dr. Martin Luther King. Board Bill 56, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing a multi-year public work and improvement program at St. Louis-Lambor International Airport, which is owned and operated by the city, provided for consistent of capital to improvement projects to and from the terminal complexes, concourses, parking facilities, and garages, and associated park, airport buildings, structures, facilities, roadways, driveways, and environs, airport runways, taxiways, aprons, ramps, associated airfield buildings, structures, facilities, and environs, and other associated airport improvement or programs more fully described in Exhibit A title project list. Board Bill 57, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the director of airports and controller, owner and operator of St. Louis-Lambor International Airport, to enter into and execute the shared ride shuttle concession agreement between the city and airport best taxi service, granting the concessionaire certain rights and privileges in connection with the occupancy and use of premises, which is defined and more fully described in Article 2 of the agreement that was approved by the Airport Commission and is attached hereto as attachment 1, containing the severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 58, sponsored by Alderman and Gracia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service, establishing a public works and improvement project for the I-64 at Jefferson City Streets Project in the city. Board Bill 59, sponsored by Alderman Roadie, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and reissuance and delivery of one or more series of tax increment revenue notes, including increasing the not-to-exceed principal amount of previously issued RPA 5 tax increment revenue notes, St. Louis Innovation District RPA 5 Project Series B from the original aggregated principal amount of $2 million and containing the severability clause. Board Bill 60, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, pursuant to ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Sarah Tillard Lane, which shall begin at the intersection of San Francisco and North Newstead and run northwest on San Francisco to the intersection of San Francisco and North Taylor. Board Bill 61, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 720 through 812 South Teresa. Board Bill 62, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance authorizing and directing the fire commissioner to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency, assistance to firefighter grants to fund the 2018 Smoke and Co. Alarm Program upon approval of the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, and to expand funds by entering to contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 63, sponsored by Alderman and Gracia, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2612 Anne Avenue area. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 55, 61, and 63; to the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 56 and 57; to the HUDs Committee, Board Bill 58 and 59; to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 60; and to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 62. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Board Bill 11, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed and Alderman Vacaro, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters a proposed amendment to the Charter of the city to maintain the Board of Aldermen as a body of 28 Aldermen representing 28 wards and preventing its reduction beginning December 31, 2021, to a body of 14 Aldermen representing 14 wards as called for under Article 1, Section 3 of the city charter, proving for an election to be held for voting on the proposed amendment and the manner for the voting and for the publication, certification, deposit, and recording of this ordinance and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the HUDs Committee. Board Bill 2, sponsored by the following Alderpersons: Calder, Bosley, Hubbard, Murphy, Howard, Davis, Spencer, Vacaro, Cone, Clark Hubbard, and Pam Boyd. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission pertaining to the zoning code, Title 26, Amending Chapter 26, 08 of the Revised Code by adding a cross-reference in the Definition Section for Marijuana-related Uses, adding a new chapter to the zoning code, Title 26, pertaining to the Regulation of Medical Marijuana Facilities and including sections on the purpose, definitions, use regulations, and site requirement for medical marijuana facilities and containing a severability and emergency clause. Board Bill 5, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on District Map City Block 1179 from B, 2-family dwelling district to F, neighborhood commercial district, at 1500 through 04 Salisbury, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 6, sponsored by Alderman Moore, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the District Map in City Block 1880 from C, multiple-family dwelling district to H, area commercial district at 3614 and 3616 Co. Brilliant, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 7, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on District Map in City Block 3399 from F, neighborhood commercial district to B, 2-family district at 1913 to 1925 East College, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 10, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on District Map and in City Block 4549 from B, 2-family dwelling district and E, multiple-dwelling district to the G, local commercial and office district at 5505, 5535 through 55, and 5559 through 79 Dalemore and 73, I'm sorry, 713 through 27 and 731 Bill, and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill 49, sponsored by Alderman Moore, pursuant to ordinance 6... Board Bill 49 sponsored by Alderman Moore pursuant to ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Johnny B. Furway, which shall begin at the intersection of Coke Brilliant and Annie Malone, and run east on Coke Brilliant to the intersection of Coke Brilliant and Whittier. Board Bill 50 as amended sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission making appropriations for payment of the operating expenses, capital equipment, and improvement expenses, including lease purchase agreement involving parking division assets and debt service expenses at the parking division of the Treasurers Office, Keel and City Hall Parking Facilities, Information Technologies, Argyle Parking Facility, Shoto Building and Parking Facility, Williams Paper Parking Facility, Central Downtown Parking Facility, Buckingham Parking Facility, Couples Parking Facility, Justice Parking Facility for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020, amounting in the aggregated to the sum of $17,976,481, and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Public Safety Committee. Board Bill 51 sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Fire Commissioners to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency, assistance to firefighters grant to fund the cancer prevention initiative upon approval of the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, and to expand funds by entering to contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Legislation Committee. Board Bill 12 Committee Subsponsored by Alderman Vacaro and Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance repealing Section 1 of Ordinance Number 68605, approved March 16, 2010, and codified as 208430 in the City Revised Code of Ordinances, which pertains to election rules and procedures relating to the payment of taxes by candidates for an elective office of the city and replacing said section of Ordinance Number 68605 with the new Section 1 requiring all candidates for an elective public office in the city to have paid in full at the time of their filing those taxes and bills for services set forth herein and to provide evidence thereof in a sworn affidavit at said time and containing a severability clause. That is the extent of second reading of board bills.
We'll dispense with line item 14 at the request of the Alderwoman from the first. Please place Board Bills 31 Committee Substitute and Board Bill 35 on the regular perfection calendar from the perfection consent calendar. Does 31 Committee Substitute and 35 on the regular perfection calendar?
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill 38 sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 69650 relating to the Phase 2 redevelopment agreement between the city and Cary Tiff, and containing the severability clause. Board Bill 39 sponsored by Alderwoman Ingrascia, an ordinance amending Ordinance 62220, approved February 6, 1991, by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement and amending attached redevelopment plan by adding Phase 4 to be completed May 1, 2029. Board Bill 21 sponsored by Alderman Cone and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance approved and recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of an operating lease agreement of the property known as West End Community Center between the city as Lisor and Demetrius Johnson Charitable Foundation, Inc., as Lisi, with an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the 22nd, second by Alderman from the 10th, Alderwoman from the first.
Make sure that the-
Yes, I move them 31 Committee Substitute and 35.
Thank you.
Yes. Any further, any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, second by Alderman from 10th, that we adopt our perfection consent calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 31 Committee Subsponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not exceed in aggregate amount $17,259, plus issuance cost, principal amount of tax increment revenue notes, Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, and Phase 4, City Foundry, St. Louis, RPA 2, redevelopment project Series 20A B of the city, and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 16th, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number 31 Committee Substitute. Alderman from the 16th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 31 Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the absence of the sponsor and being the Vice Chair of HUDs, I have moved that we perfect Board Bill Committee Substitute.
31 Committee Substitute been moved by Alderman from the 16th, and second by Alderman from the 19th. Alderman from the 16th, please proceed.
So these are pretty standard tax increment financing. This is a project anchored in Midtown that I think is on its, well under its way to construction. This was critical financing, gap financing that was needed. There's a little nuance to it, but for the most part, these are straightforward tips that we pass down here all the time. So I'll be happy to entertain a few questions if I can answer them.
Alderwoman from the first.
Members of the Board, the Alderman from the 16th would yield.
Alderman from the 16th will yield the questions.
I will try, yeah.
Alderwoman from the first, please proceed.
Mr. Alderman, you said you are the Vice Chair of HUDs. Did the Alderman from the 17th ask you to take care of his bills if he were not here?
Alderwoman, he asked me to keep an eye on his stuff as he has an excused absence today.
So my question was, did he ask you to handle Board Bill 31 and 35?
He asked me to keep an eye on his bills.
So the answer is no, because that is not a direct response to keeping an eye is not handling and passing a board bill. So let me be more specific. Did he ask you to sponsor and pass a Board Bill 31 Committee Substitute?
I don't think that was a specific verbiage that was requested.
Okay, thank you very much. My next question, you said that there was some nuance in this board bill. And so I would like you to tell me what the nuances are.
Sure, this is a very layered transaction that involves a lot of sources coming from both soft sources, hard sources with bank debt, all trying to work in concert and congruently with the tax increment financing notes. I think additionally, there's tax credits that are being sought on this project. So nuanced, meaning that it's not a conventional loan by any stretch of the imagination. To do a project like this, this is catalytic and transformative. It requires a lot of layered financing. So that's the nuance to which I was referencing.
And when you say there are tax credits being sought, have the tax credits been, is that something from the state that we're acquiring about, or are we asking federal tax credits and/or both? And if so, have they been granted?
That's an answer that, well, wait a minute, let's compartmentalize that question.
Thank you.
Can you repeat it for me, please?
I wanted to know if the tax credits, you said that there were tax credits being sought. What's your verbiage used? So what I wanted to know is if, are they actually being sought? Have they been approved? And if so, are the tax credits, one, state, two, federal, three, both?
Which tax credits are you referring to?
You're the one talked about the nuances and the tax credits being sought. So my, wait, wait, wait. So my, what I'm referring to is what you said, which was the tax credits that were being sought. So any and all tax credits that you are speaking to, that speaking about, that are being sought are the ones I'm speaking about.
Certainly. So there, I believe, I believe the sponsorship was originally pursuing federal new markets tax credits. I'm not sure if that came to fruition, or if they sought an additional source to fulfill that. I don't have the answer to that. That's a more of a fluid process to bring that layer of financing into a project like this. I know also, at one point, they were pursuing federal historic tax credits on a portion of the project. And I believe they've made all their Part 1, Part 2 and application requisites for that, and have filed it with the state.
So the applications, so my question becomes, what if they say no? What if they deny that? I am familiar with both kinds of tax credits. What happens with this project if that is denied?
My guess would be contingency finances, the balance of the project, most likely through developer equity, which has all probably been underwritten by the conventional financiers, as well as the equity partners that are in this project.
And so when you talk about developer equity, we would ask the developers to put more money in?
I don't think we would as the city. I think the financing partners associated with it would, Alderwoman.
Well, that's, I'm sorry, that's what I mean.
The loan's not going to close unless it has a balanced sources and uses at the time proceeds are transferred. So the market takes care of this issue, I think, to which you might be raising.
So that's my question again, then, is we being, I'm sorry, and I use the word "we" sometimes when we're talking about projects, I use "we." I'm saying that if the tax credits don't go through, then the bank, the financing, or someone else would ask the partners to put more of their own money or find a different way to finance.
Additional capital or increase to bank loan, correct.
Okay, and this traditional tax increment financing that you're talking about, are you familiar with, at the end of last term, very close to the end, Alderman from the 17th brought down a flow chart of his tax increment financing, and many of them were in the red, and even though 15 or 16 people voted for something that said that they were proceeding, but they were proceeding in the red and were not doing a good job, why would we be adding more tax increment financings that have a chance to fail? And also, when you talk about this standard tax increment financing, this tax increment financing takes money from our public schools, isn't that correct? And we can start with the last one.
I don't think that is correct. I don't think that is correct.
We take money from our public schools. That is absolutely correct.
It takes additional increment over and above what the property is already paying, so it's not taking.
It's money that they could get that they don't get. And for many years, the school board used to-
I just want to be clear, it's proceeds that are withheld. It's not proceeds that are taken.
The school board used to come down here before, they were under the appointment of the three people that-
Revenue stream, it's not taken. The word "taken" is an inappropriate word to use right now. This is a current revenue stream that exists.
So it is your opinion that it doesn't take away?
Increment above and beyond the market value is withheld, not taken.
Is it your opinion that it doesn't take away from the St. Louis public schools?
The revenue stream that is additionally, that is currently paying property taxes is not taken.
No, not the revenue, but the whole point of new revenue is so that the St. Louis public schools can get the new revenue and capture it and do things. And so any new revenue that would be coming to the St. Louis public schools is not going to the St. Louis public schools because it's being used to finance these projects. Is that correct?
What you just described there is accurate. The above increment is what's not, would not go to the city public schools or the city.
So that would be like working extra overtime. You used to work 40 hours, and now you work 60 hours, but you still just get the 40 hours paycheck, because the new 20 hours that you work go to something to finance people. Now, did you see the flow chart that the Alderman from the 17th put out on our desk at the end of last session, very near, in which many of his tax increment finance projects were in the red?
I do remember the flow chart. I don't have it committed to memory.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I don't have any further questions from Alderman from the 16th. Mr. President, Members of the Board, I rise in opposition. I ask it to be taken off of the perfection consent calendar for the many reasons that I just spoke to here. I think that we, the Alderman from the 16th talked about this, oh, just standard tax increment financing. Yeah, that standard tax increment financing is hurting and killing our schools. And for all these many years that I've been here, that I've heard about, oh, one of these days, we're going to get more money from these kinds of projects. We don't get more money. They find another way to recapture it and reuse it, and our public schools are struggling. We talk about the love of our public schools, but we don't show it. I think we down here treat money for tax abatement and tax increment financing, those things, the same way that Republicans treat guns, that we just go ahead and go along with it. We know it's a problem. We don't care it's a problem, and we continue to go against what's in the best interest of our schools. For many years, the school board had a lobbyist down here, and they hated tax increment finance. And they talked about the money, and I would love for somebody to produce a chart about where we have captured these monies from these tax increment finance for our school, because every time I look up, we're finding a way to get that money and keep it with the development. And so in many of our, the communities, both north and south, I remember when they started closing schools, okay? And now we have these big pieces of property all throughout our community where they've closed the schools. They can't afford them. You can't build development up in our communities. The St. Louis public schools can't even afford to keep them boarded properly, and the grass cut. And yet, we keep taking potential funds and saying, this is the only way we can fund it. It's on the back of our schools. It is wrong, and it's also wrong when we know that the person sponsoring it, his TIFs have not been productive. They have been counterproductive. And also, he was very critical of the Alderwoman from the 15th, who tried to come up with a way we could capture some of the things for organizations in our community. All of that was a no, and here we go again with TIFs. While he's telling us he is trying to make it so that TIFs are harder and that all these development things are harder, but he only makes it harder for other people who hardly do any of this. And then he continues, he has more TIFs than all of the rest of the city put together. It is ridiculous. And he should be showing in the black, not in the red. And for these reasons, I stand and I oppose Board Bill 31 Committee Substitute.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? There's been a request for roll call. It's been moved by Alderman from the 16th, seconded by Alderwoman from the 19th, that we perfect Board Bill 31. No, no, I'm all ready. Yes, we're taking it, are you going to ask for a roll call? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could inquire from the Alderman from the 16th on the bill.
Alderman from the 16th will yield a question to the Alderwoman from the 8th.
Well, actually, as a point of order, you know, Mr. President, I think just with the member, with the Alderman from the 17th being absent, I'd just like to put this on the informal calendar, and then he can solve any questions after that.
All right. Madam Clerk, at the request of the Alderman from the 16th, please place Board Bill 31 Committee Substitute on the informal calendar.
So noted. Board Bill 35 sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperation project agreement among the city, the City Foundry Transportation Development District, and the City Foundry Community Improvement District, and containing the severability clause.
Alderman from the 16th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 35.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to do the same thing here. I request it to be put on the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place Board Bill 35 on the informal calendar.
So noted. That is the extent of board bills for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 43, 44, and 45.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar. You recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
For adoption of third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the 22nd. I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderwoman from the 27th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Con. Alderman Con. Twenty-six ayes votes.
By vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the 22nd and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
We have none.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill 43, 44, and 45.
All other business being suspended. The President shall, in open session, affix his signature here too, to the end, that these may become law. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 48.
No, I think that was already taken up in regular resolutions. And courtesy, so we have none. That was the-
Okay, we have none.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miss Lyons, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, June 10th, 2019, Public Safety will have a meeting at 1:00 PM in the Kennedy Room. The public, the meeting is for Public Safety members to hear from the public about their thoughts on recent controversial social media posts by some members of the police, the St. Louis Police Department. Tuesday, June 11th, 2019, engrossment and rules will have a meeting 10:00 AM in the leisure room discussing Board Bills 38, 39, and 21. Also, on Thursday, June 13th, 2019, the Personnel Committee will have a meeting 10:00 AM in the leisure room. Friday, June 14th, 2019, full board meeting 10:00 AM in the chambers. That is the extent of the announcements.
Alderman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, this Sunday, June 9th, is the annual J.C.'s Soapbox Derby on the Hill. It takes place right near Shaw School at the corner of Mackland and Botanical, and runs down to Shaw Avenue. There'll be a car show, live music, food, beverage, and we have the annual race between the police chief and the fire chief. The winner gets more money in the budget this year. Thank you.
Alderman, Alderman from the 27th.
Yes, Mr. President. This is a grandmother's moment because my granddaughter was raised and bred in the Wildflower Park community. And she went to the St. Louis Public Schools. She graduated from University of Kentucky with two major degrees, one in forensics and one for biochemistry.
Wow.
I am proud to say she got a grant from the Clinton Foundation. She is now in the Virgin Islands. She has been there for three years. And so I just wanted to publicly tell her how proud I am. She can't hear me, but I'm trying not to cry because I just want to-
She's watching online.
No, how proud I am because people feel that people living in the North Quarter don't want anything. And so I just want people to realize, our kids do want something. And she's excited about coming home for the Fourth of July. We haven't seen her in three years, so you know we're going to have a big party for her. But I just wanted to publicly tell her I'm proud of Essence Quarter, and she has met President Bill Clinton and Hillary Clinton, and they received a grant from them. Thank you.
Oh, congratulations. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I actually was raising, going to inquire, Mr. President, the Forest Park Advisory Board, Mr. President.
Yes.
The nominations to the Forest Park Advisory Board, are those being referred to the Parks Committee?
To the Parks Committee, yes.
I just needed, if that's the case, then I would like to schedule a Parks Committee committee hearing for Friday at 9:00 AM next week.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman, I finally figured. Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you. I don't know why this board is trying to spar me.
Yeah, yeah.
But on the 8th of this, this Saturday, tomorrow, we're having the Gospel Fest at Kena Plaza. Michael Atkinson and myself, starting at 10 o'clock, putting on the Gospel Fest. So if you want to hear some good gospel music, come on down to Kena Plaza tomorrow at 10 o'clock. I'd like to say to all my colleagues in here, soon I won't be here, but I'd like for you to do me a favor, all the new people that's coming in. Give each other a chance. And we are the Delmar Divide. We created the Delmar Divide. And if we didn't create it, we continue the Delmar Divide. This is the most polarized place in the, in the United States. We, the body of the Board of Aldermen, have created and continue to do this. And I'm not picking on anybody, but the new people coming in that's black and white need to come together. And I'd like to have a tour of each other's ward to see how we live and how different it is from one area to the other. We have allowed the media to call us two cities, North City and South City, but we only have one mayor. And we had to cut this out. We fight on the floor. Most of our issues are black and white. Do me a favor before I leave here and before I resign or before I die, to do a favor for the city of St. Louis and for the citizens of the city of St. Louis, and come together and fight together for one cause. Don't look at it as a polarization or as a black-white issue. Please come together because we continue this Delmar Divide. This city will never straighten out. That's why people are leaving here by the thousands because of the way we act down here. They watching us. And we got to come together. And that's what all the new people and some of the old ones that keep that regime going, that keep teaching bad habits to the new ones that's coming in. We are here for one reason, for the citizens of the city of St. Louis, not for our personal selves. I know I get a little grumpy at times, throw bricks and pitches and all, but I'm, I'm tired of the whole deal. We need to come together by some mean hook or crook. Let's take a tour of each other, and you can start with the 4th Ward, and that'll give you, put you in the shop, and maybe we'll come back and do something different. I love all of you. That includes you, Big O, Brett, Navarro, I can't call all the names, Spencer, Iglesias. You notice I'm only calling white names because it's a very polarized place.
Yeah.
So let's come together and work it out and make it a betterment for the whole city of St. Louis.
Thank you. Alderman from the 23rd.
Mr. President, members of the committee, I would like to add Board Bill 62 to the Monday Public Safety meeting. The meeting is already scheduled. We're going to hear some of the, about the Facebook quotes in, in a proper form. And, but I would like to add Board Bill 62 to the committee hearing.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Note it.
Any fur, any further session? Alderman from the, Alderman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fellow members of the board, many of you may not know that the very first cocktail party in this country was held in 1917. It was the first time that food was served to people standing, food and drink were served to people standing up. So we will be celebrating that momentous occasion this weekend. Everyone is invited on Euclid this Saturday from 5:00 to 10:00 PM. There'll be live music, food, and drink. It's a great time to get out and enjoy your neighbors. To Alderman Moore's point, I think it's a good time for us to come together. And I will definitely be taking Alderman up on a, on a tour of his ward. And I look forward to, to more opportunities for us to be, to be bringing our neighborhoods together and, and I'm working on the Delmar Divide. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I just wanted to say this past Saturday, we had our second annual Father and Son Camping in the Park event. We did have some young ladies out there. It was very successful. Just wanted to appreciate all the individuals that helped make it possible for us to have an amazing time out there while mentoring our kids and teaching them some, some life skills that, that they can utilize as they grow up within this city. Also, would like to commend a few of all the people for coming out. Thank you, Pamela Boyd, Alderman Gunther. You know, I, I like to give kudos, especially recognized individuals who go above and beyond when they do so. Dan spent the entire night out there with us, slept on a park bench in a sleeping bag right behind me. He brought marshmallows. And the, the, the point is, we all sometimes stay within the area that we represent and don't walk outside of that area to get a dose of what everybody else is dealing with, or at least to be visual as we all represent the city as a whole. So just wanted to commend Dan for that. I appreciate you coming out, staying with us all night, man. It most certainly didn't have to be that way, but you did. So thank you. Also, Alderman Boyd came out there with us and was present while we fished, taught the kids out. I'm sure you saw a bunch of people catching fish. Every single person that spent the night caught a fish. So that was pretty dope. And they did it on their own with a little bit of guidance. So another old saying, if you teach them how to fish.
Yeah.
So it was, it was a pretty dope experience, though. I just wanted to appreciate everybody and the resources that you brought out. And if you shared the video or just, you know, got the word out in any way, shape, form, or fashion, just appreciate everybody. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow, June 8th, a host of organizations are hosting a 21st Ward Fishing Derby in O'Fallon Park from 7:00 AM to 12:00 noon. There will be gift prizes. I know there is a flat inch TV, a flat inch screen TV that I am actually fighting for myself. And I want to thank the Department of Conservation for fully stocking O'Fallon Park. And I share the same sentiments as the Alderman from the 4th. But at that same time, we have to be realistic about the issues that plague this city and that plague our individual communities. And I know Alderman Moore represents a community that has been long neglected by City Hall. And oftentimes, he has been the only one fighting for the veil, the greater veil, and the numerous other neighborhoods that make up the 4th Ward. And I would just be perplexed to think what the 4th Ward would look like if there was no Sam Moore, what the city of St. Louis would look like if there was no Sam Moore, no Terry Kennedy, no Sharon Tyus, and all these other individuals that have helped advance this city, not only racially but socially and politically. White people, and I have to be real about this. We could play this game all day long like we a city that gets along. We could do this all day. But white folks, they have to stop believing that they know what's in the best interest of black communities. That's the number one problem that I have coming down here to the Board of Aldermen. And I'm talking to every white Alderman. I'm talking to every black Alderman. We could sit around, we could play like we like each other. We could hold hands. We could have this fairy tale fantasy about our city, but we know that is not realistic. If I take you to the 21st Ward right now, you will be in shock, just like the 4th Ward or the 26th Ward, the 3rd Ward, the 5th Ward, the 18th Ward, the 1st Ward, the 22nd Ward. All these wards are going through the exact same problems. Every day, every Friday, we come down here and we fight for issues. We fight for basic city services, for trash to get picked up, for buildings to get boarded up, for grass to be cut. This is what we fight for. Every single day, we have to fight with department heads. We fight with commissioners, and we fight with our fellow Aldermen. So we could play like we got this fairy tale fantasy, and I wish we did, but we don't. This city is racist. We are divided. Unfortunately, we are divided. There is a South City that is beautiful, there's a North St. Louis that's in shambles, that's in wreck. We can play this game all day long. We can do this, and it's fun. It feels good. It's a feel-good moment. But there are two St. Louis's. I know Alderman Moore knows that. We all know Alderman Moore knows that. If you go back and look at the tapes of Alderman Moore speaking, whether it's hearing committee or here on the floor, he's talking about the disadvantages that his community has. So we could play this game, and it feels good. It sounds good. It looks better on TV. But we are divided. And until white people, and y'all may call me racist, controversial, I don't give a damn, but until white people truly understand the plague that we have in North St. Louis, the obstacles that we have to overcome, this city would not grow, it would not advance. Until we start treating citywide officials who are black with the same respect that we treat white citywide officials, we will not grow. Until we start respecting black Aldermen and the wars they represent and the different needs that they need to, just to sustain and just to maintain, this city will not grow. I respect every one of my colleagues, white and black. But no white person can tell my community what is needed and what is not needed. Until we get real with ourselves, these issues are going to stand. The same fight that Alderman Kennedy had when he got here 30 years ago is the same fight we have right now. The same fight that President Reed had when he took office in 2007, as the first black president of Board of Aldermen, we still have that fight right now. The same fight that Alderman Davis is going through because she represents one of the most diverse wards, white and black, that same fight that she's going through when she was first elected, we're still having that fight right now. So until we get real and address these problems, ain't nothing's going to happen. We're still going to be in the same position, the same condition. Until white folks actually work with black folks, until white Aldermen actually work with black Aldermen, we not going to get anywhere. And that's the same thing for black Aldermen too, until we actually work together on a cohesive platform. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 3rd?
Just real quick, I'm sorry. Just wanted to introduce Lucinda Frazier. That's my honored guest, my mother, also the committee woman of the 3rd Ward. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to excuse the Alderman from the 17th Ward due to necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd. I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 23rd. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adjourn until next Friday, June 14th, 2019, 10:00 AM.
Move, been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, stand and adjourn.